Pat has recognized it, and I'm going to go with that. And I call this the public meeting of the ICSD Board of Education to Order. And really, the first... We are not going into exec session, so really just want to officially modify the agenda if we could for the... entertain a motion to do that.
Rob, have we discussed the best way to modify the agenda, given that we do not anticipate going into an exec session? I may have missed part of that conversation.
Ryan, it's... Well, Pat and I were talking about it as a way to introduce that, but we're going to just shift the public comment period and board responses. That will be after we go through the consent agenda and the policies. 10.2 through 10.4. Then, after we're done with the policies, then we'll do a public comment period and just get into the school district business reopen... Well, Dr. Brown has that reopen plan. Does that make sense?
I move we modify the agenda as Rob just described. Tricia, I don't know if Tricia or Emily or who's capturing that. And I hope for our fellow board members that makes sense to you as well.
I second that. I believe that would simply require renumbering items 4.1, 4.2, and everything following. So 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 would go... Would lower by a number, and then items 4.1 and 4.2 would be 10.1 and 10.2. That's... That would be what I'm looking at logistically.
I may also recommend that we take the current 10.2, 10.3, and 10.4 and have the board have a conversation of those prior to 10.1. So moving 10.1 at the end of school district business, seeing as I'm sure the vast majority of our community is going to anticipate wanting to hear our reopening planning as well. Does that make sense to board members?
Right, that's right.
Friendly modification.
Right. The reopening discussion will happen after public comment period and our... Any and all responses there. Got it? Great. Is that clear?
I think that's clear.
Okay. It's been moved, seconded. And Tricia, if we go ahead and just do the roll on that, changes to the agenda tonight, then we'll have everybody hopefully on board.
Okay. Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFave? Moira Lang? Christopher Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wazalu?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. And hopefully, that is clear. So at this point, we will go right to the consent agenda. It is pretty limited, so I think if we go ahead and just have a motion on that consent agenda, we can discuss it after it is moved. I'll move the consent agenda presented. We got them moved by Chris, second by Pat. Any questions? The personnel report was the main item. It was there for us to read and review. Any questions or comments? If not, Tricia, please go ahead and call the roll again, and we can move on to the policies.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell? Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wazalu?
Yes. Yes. Nicole is on also.
I'm sorry. Nicole LaFave?
We are voting on the consent agenda, Nicole.
Yes.
Thanks, Nicole. Thanks, everybody. Now, we are going to go down to Code of Conduct Addendum. And Sean, and Pat, and Moira, they're all on the policy works session, Policy Committee, and if you want to address the policies as we deal with this section.
As the board colleagues know... Well, Rob, I apologize. Are we going to wait for the superintendent report until afterwards as well?
Absolutely. Yep.
Yep. As my board colleagues know, beginning last September of 2019, we created a Code of Conduct Advisory Council that... Whose charge was to review our current code of conduct and to make recommendations to the board this past June. Given where we find ourselves and what has taken place during that time period, the Code of Conduct Committee Advisory Council obviously had a little bit of disruption. This summer, we began meeting again and having some additional conversation, and it quickly became apparent to the Code of Conduct Advisory Council that while we are still in need of reviewing and making recommendations to the board about our current code of conduct, given the fact that we are in a virtual learning setting, there are some immediate items within the code of conduct that warrant conversation. And I'll just give you a quick example. Our current code of conduct has a dress code that says that face coverings are not allowed. I would surmise that during this time period, hopefully when we find ourselves in person and even virtually, that that's a dress code that may not be what we want to adhere to, or we may want to have some conversations about changing. So the Code of Conduct Advisory Council, we have been organized by Lilly for a good portion of time, and then Dan Bryman. Dan, thank you greatly for your organization and keeping us on track. Anne has participated. Erin has participated. Nicole has been to a couple of meetings. We also had Merrill Phipps from the Village of Ithaca and Burns Thomas from SUNY Cortland. And I know I'm missing folks, and I apologize. And we've been in contact with other folks as well. And what is presented here, it's attached, is as the disclaimer says in the box, right? That this document is an addendum to the current code of conduct. It does nothing to change the current code of conduct, but we're hoping that we think about a little more deeply some additional things that are necessary in a virtual learning environment. And so I don't know that it warrants me reading the addendum. It does add student rights and responsibility, caregiver rights and responsibilities, staff and faculty rights and responsibilities, what we call educators, the rights and responsibilities of administrators, of the superintendent, and of the board, for us to be thinking about what should take place during this time period. And then conversation about a couple of key items that we believe as a school district we need to address. Dr. Brown, I know some of these things will be addressed as we talk about both the reopening plan and what takes place. For my board colleagues, we've had conversations that some of these items are also union negotiated items, but it includes a conversation around attendance and how do we measure attendance? And probably much more importantly, how do we measure absentees, given some of the difficulties that some students may experience, either with technology, with devices, with internet connection? There's a section on dress code. There's a section on mask wearing, again, hopefully as soon as we can be back in person. And then a conversation about learning expectations and some of our academic policies during a virtual learning environment, including homework grading and how students may or may not quote unquote "fail" a class, and what does that look like? So I'll stop for a minute. But Pat and Moira, you both, we had a brief conversation at the last Policy Committee meeting, and I'll ask if any of my board colleagues have anything to add before we open it up for a conversation.
I will just add that our Policy Committee meet... At our Policy Committee meeting, we did look at some of the language, especially around dress codes, mask wearing, and the grading policy, and that the current version in front of the board has taken into consideration that discussion, and I think produced a better and more inclusive and sensible approach to those issues. So I'm in support of the modifications, and anyone who's interested in taking a closer look at that discussion should be able to go to the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting.
I just want to add one thing. Sean is this... With this document is what the... Where it goes from here, because this... When we vote on it tonight, we're voting to essentially bring it out to the larger community for them to look at as well, as opposed to enacting the actual items that are in here at this time. Would you say that is how you understand it, or am I understanding that correctly?
Procedurally, we can do one of two things. We can follow our standard procedure of two readings before something gets adopted. So this could be a first reading. It would be voted on. It goes back to the Policy Committee. The Policy Committee makes any necessary changes. What we're expecting also to have very wide distribution to union leadership, to PTAs, to student council groups, right? We want as much feedback as possible. Then bring it back to the board for a second vote and adoption. That's a possibility. Another possibility, and I apologize for making things complicated, is that we don't have to vote on it. We simply send it out to the larger audience as much as possible, still send it back to the Policy Committee, and vote on it as a second reading at a board meeting for immediate adoption. Right? So that's a possibility as well. The immediate adoption option would require a supermajority vote for it to be passed. But either way, I think what we're hoping for is to encourage the conversation as broadly and as quickly as possible, because it has real implications as we engage in the first three weeks of virtual learning. So my Policy Committee colleagues, I apologize, I don't know that we came to a consensus on that, and so... But Anne, that's my long-winded answer to your question.
Other questions, comments? Sean, just some guidance regarding first reading, second reading, timing. I mean, you know, we will have another board meeting this month. Is it critical? It seems... Seemingly, it would be good to get this out there and get input. You know, first reading obviously allows us to do that. Just sending it out there, then we'd have to, you know, we have to do a, you know, push it forward quickly. I'm not sure there's a downside to doing a first reading tonight and then letting it age just for a couple of weeks and seeing it getting input, obviously, tonight and over the next few weeks, and then doing a second reading and adoption. But that's just me.
Yeah, Rob, I think that's what we were talking about the most. You know, I'm very much aware that as a board, even when we adopt policy, it may not automatically result in a change in practice. And so partly, what we are hoping is to engage the conversation as quickly as possible, because whether this is official board policy or not, it could be put into practice by our educators, whether or not the board passes or readopts an addendum. The things that we're talking about here, we're trying to be mindful of students in particular who have been marginalized and lessons that we learned from last March to June. We learned a number of key lessons about students' ability to engage and participate, especially students who are wanting to engage and participate, but still, we're finding it to be somewhat difficult for a number of reasons. We were thinking about dress code. As a faculty member, I know I have classes that sometimes students are and are not dressed appropriately. How do we engage that in a virtual realm? Previously, we would send folks home, depending on how bad we thought the apparel was, or if it was offensive, or sometimes we were completely and utterly biased, right? Gender, sexist, racialized, you name it. And so we're hoping that we can engage in these conversations as quickly as possible to see if we can't change some of the practices and learn from our educators, learn from our students, learn from our parents and caregivers, things that they feel that we should be discussing as a district during this time period. So again, a long-winded answer, Rob, I agree. I don't think there's any harm in us doing the first reading. We have a number of policies that we've passed a first reading and never came back to a second reading, but it does allow us the opportunity then to email out as... Or publish out, as Eldred says, print copies in various places as far and wide as possible.
Sean, my question is, how will input be incorporated in revisions? I mean, if we're going to get input and then we're not going to change anything, that's not a good approach.
No, I don't think...
And I'm very concerned, you know, if we want these changes and these specifics to be put into practice, the people who are going to act upon them need to be aware of what they are. So, you know, as everybody's been saying, we need to make sure that this is out there for all of the concerned people to have a look at it, to be able to give us input, and then for us to take that input into consideration. So I'm just asking, you know, how we do that?
The Code of Conduct Advisory Committee Council, excuse me, is still scheduled to meet this Thursday.
Okay.
We'll be finding input. I think in the draft that we sent out, we asked people to send input to any member but to our... The board clerk in particular. And what it really is going to mean probably is, as a policy committee, we're going to have to hold a special policy committee meeting in the next couple of weeks to engage in this conversation. How we make that happen? We are hoping that tonight, depending on what the board decides, that we can send this out immediately to various groups and stakeholders. That would be the idea. So it would be in people's... It would be open for people to start having conversations about immediately this evening is the best way I can answer that.
And I would say, you know, absolutely, the... We routinely pass policy for our first reading with the knowledge and anticipation that there will be edits for that second reading, and we take a one look at it. For some of us, we take a look... One look at it and then revisit it and come up with a final version for adoption, for that second reading. So standard practice, I would think.
And the only thing I would add is that the add... In the addendum, and Moira, we took your advice last time as well, that there's nothing that I read that's prescriptive. It's having people to consider a little bit more thoughtfully about how we engage in some of our practices. And so if you take a look at it and read it, it doesn't say educators must do this. There's one item that probably may have a little... Generate a little more conversation than others, but it's saying, look, during for the next three weeks, we should probably be mindful about what homework looks like and how we're assessing it, and if we're making that the only way in which students pass or fail a class, we may want to have some larger conversations. Not everyone's going to be in favor of that, absolutely. We understand that. And I think that's the point about having these conversations, to see what does this... What does education look like during this time period? So, and I don't know... I don't want to be the only one talking, even though I am. So other folks, you know, other reactions, things that you would add, et cetera. Dan, can I put you on the spot and see if there's anything that you would add, given with your work for the past couple of weeks of this project?
Sure, sure. No, I, you know, I really liked how we added supportive and positive statements, particularly in the attendance section, our goal to support students and build positive relationships. We made some suggestions that schools assign teachers or allies as attendance contacts, all focusing on the relationship. And then we also recommended that it's important to find adults in the school who are already connected with students and build and accentuate on those relationships. Just wanted to add that part. Thanks, Sean.
Dr. Bradwell, this is Nicole. Question about students' rights in terms of the fourth one, freedom from exclusionary discipline and practices. Is there going to be some point within the document where that's defined? Because I think the committee can have one definition of what that looks like, and teachers and support staff could have a different definition.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be the conversation between our administrators as well, and what does that mean? I'm struggling to understand what suspension looks like in virtual realms, which I know folks have an idea, and I know that it's happened. I understand that. At this point in time, that's something that you can send a recommendation to us, too, and we can talk about that. And I imagine there'd have to be some conversation in the official reopening plan as well about what any suspension looks like for any students if they are going to be excluded from instruction. Lilly, I'm looking at your box, and I know you can't tell that, but I don't know if you have anything that you would add to that.
I think it's part of the ongoing conversations. You know, we, of course, want to include kids as much as possible in learning, right? So, you know, and we've, of course, begun conversations since last spring about everything from, you know, attendance to disciplinary issues, et cetera, grading, all of the things that are within this addendum, which are excellent. And I think we just need to continue to engage together with our educators to... And with our kids, get some kid feedback in this, too, to really understand what that may look like in the digital environment.
So Nicole, I'm taking notes as well to follow up on that question that you asked, to make sure that we give another answer as well.
And I'm going to speak personally. I personally hope that we're... We, meaning the district, as well as teachers and support staff, are committed to not suspending kids, given that this is most likely their only stake in conformity, given that they're already not in school, that we wouldn't be finding ways in which to exclude them from instruction, given how hard times are right now for everyone.
Other comments? I mean, we have a couple more policies to go through. It's not the last time we're going to be discussing this, but feel free to weigh in. But Sean, I suppose at some point, we can go ahead and move it to a second for that first reading and still have conversation from there.
So I would move the Code of Conduct addendum for a first reading.
Second.
Second by Moira. Any other questions, comments regarding the document as it reads right now, or anything else on this... At this moment? Not hearing that. This... Well, it has been moved and seconded for a first reading, and I'm not hearing any other questions right now, so Tricia, if you could call the roll. Or Emily, who are just let Tricia know that we need to vote on a first reading, please.
Can fill in, Lynn.
Thanks, Emily. Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley-Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris?
Yes.
Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Pat Wazalu?
Yes.
Thanks, Emily. Thanks to everyone. And so we'll move on to Policy 1900, and I'll let Pat or Sean or Moira run with it.
The good thing, we're actually going to let Dan, Dr. Bryman, run with us. We have the next two policies we are required to change. And so, Dan, I'll let you speak to Policy 1900, parental and family engagement.
Thanks, Sean. So Policy 1900, we were selected by NICE Ed Office of ESUP for monitoring in order to meet federal requirements. We're participating in a desk review, and some of the feedback we received was basically a change in wording of the policy. And the guidance we received that we were no longer to use the words parent involvement, instead we... Instead, we were to use a phrase, parent and family engagement. As a group, we had questions about this. We preferred to use the word caregiver. However, the feedback we received from the reviewer was we had to keep the language... We had to include parent and family engagement in our policy. And although we couldn't change parents to caregivers, the guidance we received was we could use a phrase to include caregivers that would say, parents and persons in parental relationship with the student. And that would cover grandparents, caregivers, foster parents, aunts and uncles. So as a group in our Policy Committee, we added a statement, and I'll read the statement. The Ithaca City School District would like to recognize and affirm the contribution of caregivers when we define parent and family engagement by including the phrase, parents and persons in parental relationship with the student. We know this helps to encompass grandparents, foster parents, aunts, uncles, and others who are caregivers. So that's the change that we've made.
Thank you, Dan. And then throughout the document, you'll see highlighted the other places where we've changed through a federally required doc... Or a policy where it says, parent and family engagement. And you'll see the many places where we changed that language. And so the intent of the policy has not changed. It's almost the exact same, except for the phrase that Dan read, as well as parents and family engagement. This has already been passed for a second reading, or, excuse me, for a first reading. I'm moving for... I'm moving the policy as written for a second reading. I'm moving for, I'm moving the policy as written for a second reading and adoption this evening.
I'll second that.
Same like Pat. Thanks. Any other questions other than we can't fight the feds on this? It's not, it's not the Albany, it's the feds, right? So it's one of those. Anything from the group? I know it's, we always appreciate the work of the policy committee and all the work sessions to go through all this. Education policy is fascinating, as we all know. Emily or Patricia will go ahead and call the roll.
Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Sean Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang?
Yes.
Chris Malcolm?
Yes.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasle.
Yes.
Thanks, everyone. It passes and another policy sixty seven oh one is going to make the audit committee happy and our auditors happy. And, you know, I'm not going to make Sean talk about it, but he's on the audit committee or was, but I think Dan or Amanda can speak to this.
Sure, yeah.
Well, Rob, what I was going to, no, I'm just messing around. Please, Dan or Amanda.
All right. So this, thanks. Thank you. This is another part of our desk review. And the feedback we received that we had to identify a procedure for fixed assets for title programs. So we created this policy. It's a procedure for accounting general fixed assets. It'll help us maintain an inventory of assets, provide accountability, and provide insurance coverage. And everything that is a fixed asset carries a minimum value of $500. A property record will be maintained. We'll maintain inventory and arrange for an independently contracted firm to conduct an onsite inventory and appraisal of the school district equipment at least every 24 months. We've subscribed to NICER and we've contracted with a specific company that will manage our inventory. This company provides fixed asset accounting, cost appreciation, inventory management, barcode tagging, and financial reporting requirements. And that's, that's basically the policy. Thanks.
I move policy sixty seven oh one for a second reading and adoption.
Second.
Moved by Sean, second by Pat, and I certainly don't have any questions. So if anyone else does, feel free. Otherwise, Patricia, we can go ahead and approve this for a second reading and be in compliance.
Okay. Rob Ainsley?
Yes.
Erin Croyle?
Yes.
Lauren Eversley Bradwell?
Yes.
Eldred Harris? Nicole LaFave?
Yes.
Moira Lang? Chris Malcolm?
Yeah.
Anne Reichlin?
Yes.
Patricia Wasle.
Yes.
And Moira, if you want to go ahead and.
Yes.
Vote again. I think we have Moira as a yes. There you go. All right. Passes. Thanks, everyone. Sean, it's interesting to do policy kind of in the beginning. Lots of people tune out by the time we get policies at the end of the meeting. But it is critically important. It's a very important work of the district, of the board, and policy drives what we do. So great for everybody having an opportunity to experience a little bit of policy. We do have a fair amount of folks on the meeting. So I think we, at this point, we should just really go right ahead and go jump back and we'll do our public comment period, board responses. Dr. Brown will do his report and we'll go right into the balance of the, of the evening. So we're ready for public comments. I know there probably are a few and we can go ahead and get started.
So again, I want to remind folks, one of the ways in which to speak at public comment is to use the raise your hand feature. Or you can send a chat to our board clerk. Patricia, you can also use the let's talk portal and contact any board member at any point in time. I know that Steve Manley is looking to speak as part of IPEI. Steve, I hope you're here and we'll have someone unmute you in a quick second.
Good evening. Am I unmuted? Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Stephen Manley. I am the executive director of IPEI, the Ithaca Public Education Initiative. A local nonprofit dedicated to serving as a fundraising organization, making grants available to our teachers and our school leaders and staff, and even occasionally students. Today I speak to you in that role, though I am also a parent of a rising second grader at Beverly J. Martins and two who you don't have yet in your schools, but are up and coming. I want to thank Dr. Brown, especially today, for the opportunity to speak at the ICSD convocation to present an award to Chris Bell in recognition of his teaching success and innovation in science education at Fall Creek and in other locations. It's an honor to have the opportunity to address all of the teachers, whether they're in the room or not, and all of the staff, our bus drivers and our school administrators, and you, Board of Ed members, every year. In fact, this closes out our awards season. And I want to share out a few names of awards that we have presented to students and to teachers and staff, which may have been missed in the craziness that was our May and June. So each year we have the opportunity to present awards that are created from our endowed funds, gifts given to IPEI in honor, in memory, and celebration of an individual's life or legacy. And we'd like to recognize some of those students and people today. We today recognized with the Raymond C. Lair Science Teacher Award, Chris Bell. And in the summer or late spring, we recognized Zoe Clausner with the Student Environmental Science Student Award from the Lair Special Award Fund. We recognized Ishan Etheridge with the Carol J. Buckley Scholarship for Students in the Arts. We recognized Emma Hagan with the Iman Grual Memorial Award, the second award given in Iman's honor. We recognized Julia McNally with the Noreen Moore Memorial Reward. We recognized Sarah Zinn with the Yan Wang Class of '05 Memorial Scholarship. We recognized four individuals completing the program created by Dr. Brown and his partners at the Ithaca High School, including Corey Mitchell, working through what we call the Aspiring Educators Program. And we recognize their hard work as they enter the next phase of their education and look to become educational leaders themselves. Trevion Brooks, Jade Gonzalez, Dante Shalulu, and Nadia Testut. And lastly, each year we have the opportunity to recognize individuals selected by members of IHS, Ithaca High School's senior class. The voting this year took a little bit longer. And this may be the first time some of these individuals here that they were recognized by the students, the graduating class of 2020, with an award. We ask our seniors every year to identify a new teacher, a teacher who has not yet tenured, who's just joined the faculty in the last four or five years. And this year they recognize Caitlin Hoppe as someone who's had an amazing impact on their class as graduates. We also ask them to recognize a member of the staff, someone who has been with them beyond even their tenure, perhaps has been with the school for an extremely long period of time or a short period of time. It's an opportunity for them to thank a person who has been really important in their experience. And the class of 2020 recognized Judy Cameron with the Staff Award from their senior class award. And each class gets the opportunity to recognize a club or student organization that has had the greatest impact on their class or on their four years of school experience. And the IHS class of 2020 recognized the IHS Link Crew. All of these individuals receive a letter of congratulations from IPEI, its Board of Directors and staff. All of these individuals receive a cash award, which generates from the endowed funds that people in the Ithaca community have trusted IPEI with for over two decades. Thank you, Dr. Brown, for allowing me this opportunity today to recognize Chris Bell. And thank you all for the work you do that allows us to recognize great teachers and great students.
Excellent. Thank you, Steve. I'm sure there'll be some additional comments during board responses. Again, if folks have questions or comments they want for the board to use the raise your hand feature. I did receive one through the chat and it was a question wondering about when parents may be able to get directions on schedules, learning requirements, school starting times, et cetera. And what happens if a child has not received a Chromebook, even though there have been multiple requests? And so I'm putting that out there and we'll leave time for the response to that during the board responses as well. We'll give it a moment in case there's any additional comments, questions during, for the public comment. Again, I want to remind folks, you can contact Tricia Berisford directly. You can contact the let's talk portal, or you can contact board members at any point in time. So please keep in touch during, so we can try to get your questions answered. Rob, I don't see anyone else. I believe that's it.
Very good. Thanks, Sean. Board responses, quite the list of awards from IPEI, obviously, but others who wish to weigh in.
Just a quick thing to thank you to Steve and to IPEI for all that they do for our district and congratulations. Belatedly to all those people that received those awards. So I'm so glad you brought that to our attention. Thanks.
I'd add the same. Thank you to our teachers and our educators. Congratulations on your recognition. We know that we don't do it for recognition, but it always helps when we are recognized. And I'll ask, I don't know if, who can respond about Chromebooks and who we should reach out to? I imagine it'd be our technology department, I would presume. We'll try to post that information in the chat feature if that works.
Yes, Zach Lynn. Yeah, Zach Lynn is the best person to contact. And if folks have trouble, we can't get that contact information to the chat right now, then they can email me directly. And everyone knows my email address, looking at my inbox right now.
And I'm certain that we will have a follow up about schedules, learning expectations during the next agenda item as we talk about reopening schools. And so folks can bear with us.
Thanks for that, Sean. And if there's no other comments right now, Dr. Brown, I think we can just go ahead with your report, which I'm sure will segue into reopening. So I'll, you have the floor, Dr. Brown.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Ainsley, and to all of our board members for the opportunity to serve. Today, we had, I had the great privilege and pleasure of opening, I think it was my, I've lost count, my 10th or 11th convocation. Today was much the same, but in many ways very, very different. The red carpet was out, but we had far, far fewer people walking on that red carpet this morning, no more than 50, I must say, that walked into our space to see, experience the convocation in person. But we also live streamed it and we've had over a thousand folks check out the stream already. And we're sending it out to all folks on staff. So we opened and, you know, we recognized our service awards. We had folks who were at that milestone 25, 30, 35 years in the Ithaca City School District. And, you know, it's rare. I don't think, only one other time, I think it was Paul Alexander, but we had a 40-year person. We have two 40-years today, Karen Werner and Jim Scarpula. So it was fun to recognize those folks. Obviously, they weren't in the space, but we're going to be sending their service awards out to them. We then transitioned and thank you, Steve, again for being there as we celebrated Chris Bell, this year's recipient of that special, special science award. And Chris shared some insights and some of his thinking and he was there in person as well. And then we transitioned, you know, by board policy, the superintendent to deliver a state of the district address each year. And I've taken this opportunity of the convocation to give that address. But, and we've changed the name over the years. We, we now refer to it as the Journey Updates as we, as a school community have committed to this authentic journey, which is a bit different than the academic one that I would refer to us being on previously. We explored that a bit this morning and we talked about the DO goals, DO goals, and the B goals. And how those DO goals are important. And we talked about, and we'll get into this more later, all the things we've been doing, particularly March 13th of 2020, to prepare to welcome back our young people in a virtual or in-person setting. We talked about what we're going to be doing with distance learning and how it's going to be different and better when we start next week. We explored that a little bit. We talked about all of the enhancements to our HVAC systems, all the things we've done with personal protection equipment. We talked about the $1.2 million in school district funds that we've expended to get prepared to welcome adults and young people back into our space. Those are the DO goals. And we've been doing that and it's important for us to do them. We then transitioned into what I think is the most important thing for us to think about, particularly after hearing Dr. Snidderker speak to how we're going to be in the space that we're in right now for the next few years. You know, people can argue that, but you know, we had a pediatrician, a world-renowned pediatrician say that this conversation, the situation we're in is probably going to go on for another two or three years. And I reminded our folks, it's important for us to not only do things during this time, but to be working on who we're going to be during this time. And we spoke about the culture that, you know, it is the culture that exists in school districts and in organizations, not just here, but everywhere. We talked about those characteristics that dominate our type of organizations. And we also talked about the antidote, those characteristics that are oftentimes oppressive. When we talk about perfectionism, we talk about defensiveness, we talk about paternalism, we talk about objectivity, quantity over quality, either or thinking. We laid out those characteristics today and we talk about, and we have folks reflect on how those are the characteristics that are typically consistent in school districts and other public institutions and that they are oftentimes oppressive. Although some folks refer to them as, you know, those are the things that make us great. The question I posed to our group today was, great for everyone or great for who? So we talked about those characteristics and we talked about the antidote to those characteristics as being those characteristics of love and a culture of love that we talk about often. That was our conversation this morning, you know, DO and B goals. And then we had a beautiful family finish with a special, special song and rap. Dr. John Clark joined us and his son, John, John Junior. They shared their rap that's now gone viral, Stop Corona. And they shared, they blessed us with their thinking and their, their lyrics today and sent us off on our way in a very inspiring way, I must add. Thank you, Mr. Ainsley, for being there in person. Thank you to all the board members for tuning in virtually. Just wanted to give you an update on what happened here this morning and how we started our school year with adults. We're gearing up for what Ms. Talcott and I are going to talk about here in a second, the school year and the various forms in which we're going to present it to you. So with that, unless there are questions about convocation, we will transition to talking about reopening planning, if that's okay, Ms. Ainsley. Cool. Talcott, I'll have you start and then I'll jump in. We'll attack this and the conversation about professional development. Talcott, I'll have you start and then I'll jump in. We'll attack this and the conversation about professional development.
Good evening, everyone. For those who don't know me, my name's Lily Talcott and I have the honor of serving as your deputy superintendent. I wanted to give folks an update in particular around the reopen ICSD team that we've been working with. Fabulous group of folks, have caregivers, elementary teachers, education support professionals, EA members who are nurses and bus drivers and senior typists, we have board members, we have students, secondary teachers, administrators, substitute teachers. So we've been really grateful for this team's thinking we've been meeting last week and this week to come up with a series of recommendations, some of which I'd like to share and give an update for you all. Dr. Brown, would you like to speak with, would you like to speak regarding the options that you presented? And then we can jump right in.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Talcott. These options we put in front of the team. And we also talked about them today at convocation. At this moment, where we are right now, we're thinking of three potential options for reopening. And let me be absolutely clear, we are planning to open up on October the 5th. And if our data is consistent with what it has been the last few weeks, and if my data is good, we will reopen for in-person instruction. As Dr. Snedeker said, if we can't open now, when will we open? We're planning to be open. Now, things could shift. We all know that things have changed every 15 minutes, it seems like, for me, for the last seven months. But, you know, if things shift and we will have to revisit that decision about reopening, but we hope to reopen and we're working hard to do that on the 5th. What would that look like? That's the conversation we're having as part of this reopening team. That's the conversation we're going to be having with our union leadership. That's the conversation we're having with our community as, like tonight. Option number one, if the data supports a safe reopening, which it does right now, we will be opening. And it's important, I'm going to be absolutely clear right now, we are an institution that will meet the needs of our learners. We know, I, we tried something very unique in giving choice to all ITA members. And, you know, the data came back and I've said it, I said it at the last board meeting, the data came back, around 65% of our young people and families wish to be in person. Around 70% of our teachers were choosing at the time to be in, well, 70% of our teachers at the time were choosing to be in a virtual environment. Those numbers just don't match up. So we will need to have some conversations, make some adjustments to staff our buildings in a way that will meet the needs of our learners. That's option number one. If we're in person and we're going to be offering the five-day experience for our students at the elementary and secondary level, we will have to, and you can use whatever words you wish right here. I've used the word prioritize choice. Other folks have used the word reverse choice. I don't care what word you use. The fact remains that we will have to talk about staffing and having to do something different as far as giving everyone the option to choose to be virtual or in-person if we're going to go with option number one. And I will be absolutely clear, option number one is the best-case scenario for the young people of this community. That's an experience that looks like those who've chosen to be in person are in person and we can meet their needs. So that's going to be a tough one for us to navigate, but that's what we're working towards. And that's something we need to develop a sense of urgency around as a community because October the 5th will be here soon. And if our date holds tight, like I said, we need to be in the position as an organization and as a community to offer that experience. And that is true. Now, option number two and option number three, Lily will talk about, I will say, option number three is us staying in a virtual environment. Option number three for us is not best-case scenario. Option number three for us, if not able to open up, as Dr. Snedeker said, when it's good, when do you open up? I cannot imagine a situation where our school district is virtual for an entire year or a couple of years. So I'm trying hard not to explore that option too fully, but instead focus on option number one, even though I know that's going to present some challenges for us. But anyway, Lily, you want to talk about option number two and some of these other things we've been exploring with the group?
Sure. Option number two would essentially be a hybrid model for elementary. So our elementary students would come every other day. So half of the students would come one day and then spend the next day at home learning and vice versa. And our secondary students would remain in the virtual environment. So that means, you know, likely the data would support, support that, right? So we would move in that direction if our community spread was perhaps increasing, et cetera. And then option three, as Dr. Brown said, is all virtual, right? All distance learning, which is essential, which is what we're beginning with on September 14th. So the work-
Lily, let me jump in here one more time. If I could jump in here one more time about option number three. I think it's important for our community to understand what this means. Not only do I think it's not going to be best for our young people, but we also need to have conversation, a real conversation, if we're talking about option number three about the staffing of our school district. A virtual school district is staffed differently than one that's in-person completely or hybrid. And we're seeing that happen all over our state. The school districts that are moving to a virtual environment or a virtual situation for extended period of time, they're experiencing significant layoffs. And I think in our state, it's not even technically a furlough, it's significant terminations. So again, a situation I don't want us to be in as a community where we're rightsizing or resizing our school district because we're virtual. But I must have, have everyone understand that a virtual school district is staffed differently. And if we're a virtual school district for an extended period of time, we, as a governance team, we as a community will be having conversations about how we staff that, which would be different. Sorry to interrupt, Lily, but I just wanted to make sure I underscore that particular point.
Dr. Brown. So our reopen ICSD team, we actually have an update that's on our website now that outlines our agendas and the things that we've discussed. So it's all, it's all right there if you want to take a look. So here's really what we're focusing heavily on, the barriers to reopening in person. We're really focused on that option one, the solutions associated with those barriers and communication. Some of the key elements that we've come up with are, of course, staffing and quality of distance learning. Those were large topics. We discussed, created a very long list of very thoughtful recommendations that we now can carry to those Ithaca Teachers Associations and Ithaca City School District collaborative conversations in order to consider and move forward. So we've got that part set. Now it's really in the hands and working with ITA and ICSD, right? There are additional elements, of course, around student voice and really making sure that we're incorporating student voice much more in this process. Ways to build trust in this really challenging time. COVID-19 and community spread and the goals we have around that and the ways in which we hope to communicate and track that. And presumed competence and commitment within the school district, specifically around health and safety practices, everything from the ways in which kids and staff maintain mask wearing to the ways in which we, we maintain our buildings. So again, all of those notes are up on the website. We're getting closer, we think, to having those recommendations moving forward. And we're really grateful for the service, the folks within our community in terms of their participation. It's been great. Also wanted to note that we have been engaged, many of you who are on this board meeting right now are educators here within our community. So you know, we've been engaged in a great deal of professional development. This is an image from our new teacher orientation, which was in-person, in physically distanced manner, inside and outside. We're excited for their, their love of kids, of education, especially in this incredibly difficult time. So that was last week, transitioning to this week and beyond. We're engaging our staff in elementary and secondary professional learning opportunities, focused on social emotional learning, anti-racist and culturally responsive practices, blended learning approaches and new health and safety norms. And within each of these, we have three different levels of professional development. So say this afternoon, social emotional learning, we offer at a level one, a level two, and a level three based on folks' experiences this summer in order to differentiate for our educators as well. And we're really focusing on best practices, sharing best practices, and the participation has been extraordinary. With that, I will turn it over to Dr. Brown for any closing comments and then open it up to the board.
No big closing comments, but I would love to hear the board's reaction and thoughts and questions on what we've shared today regarding our reopening plan.
Well, this is Anna. I just had a couple of questions. So just hearing this, this presentation tonight and I'm thinking about how it differs from last week. So it seems like option three is the same, that would be all remote. And option one, it seems maybe that's where the focus on how you can make that work. And then it seems like there was a change to option two from the last presentation where the, where elementary school would go part-time or... So are you also in the groups that you're working on, thinking of different ways of option two? Or are you primarily, that would somehow bring in some of the secondary students? Or are you pretty much working on option one?
And I can share that some of the scheduling and staffing recommendations that the group has come up with actually kind of fit into either option one or option two. So thinking about a hybrid schedule as a possibility for secondary was something that folks put on the table. So what would it look like if, if our secondary students came a couple of days a week instead of, instead of all five? And what would the, what could staffing look like there? So again, that's, that's certainly something that we're going to continue to explore with the ITA in our collaborative sessions and see what, what might be possible there. And then there are, there are some other creative staffing options that folks have tried to, tried to explore in terms of cohorts that, that they might be supporting. Say, I'm a, I'm a fifth grade teacher working with a couple of small, very small cohorts in a, in a essentially a co-teaching situation, right? So there's a wide range of possibilities that have come up that really are on the table and we're talking through those with, with our union collaborators.
Hi, Lily. So I was under the impression that part of the PD for these four days this week, or three days this week, was for secondary teachers training on the new student learning management system Canvas. What's going on with that?
Yes. So there are a few different ways that folks at the secondary level can engage with Canvas. So starting on Thursday, for example, at Boynton, that was really the focus of their opener together, right? So at the building level, you know, we're, we're really starting in the platform and, and working from there. And then there are office hours that are held within buildings and also district-wide as well. And then the blended learning professional development is really focused on utilizing Canvas at the secondary level. And there are, there is a great deal of building-based and PLC and department time also, folks. So they have time to build things out, play around, et cetera, in Canvas. I will say, it's probably, I think we could probably spend another five weeks learning how to use Canvas, frankly, too. There, it's really an incredibly deep program and has a lot to offer kids and educators and families. And so, of course, we're going to continue professional development for, for folks and provide those opportunities.
Lily, you mentioned the work going on at the building level. And certainly what should be pointed out, that work on bringing students back into buildings and frankly restarting school did not start on September 1st. It's, it's been going on, the educational leaders of each building, directors, they've been working on restarting schools and what that day will look like in the, in the various schools since frankly, well, last spring and all through the summer. And so I'm not sure if you want to add a little bit more color to that, just what has been going on. And, you know, I visited Mr. Trumbull and certainly there, did a deep dive on what, what a day will look like at Ithaca High. And in other schools certainly have similar, the other schools certainly have similar frameworks for what, what students should expect and frankly, what, what staff should expect when they return to the building.
Yes, Rob, we've done extensive work both at the district level and at the building level to outline all those practices and procedures. I was in northeast the other day for new teacher orientation. And for example, we lock in the screeners right there, hand sanitizers right there. There are physical distancing markers that are beautiful and lovely and totally kid-centered that have information about different types of wild animals on them. So you can learn a little while you are staying six feet apart. Yes, there's been quite a bit of work, countless hours put in.
Lily, this is, this is Pat. I've had a lot of inquiries since last week's meeting from parents of kids at the high school who, their kids very much want to go back there. They're particularly interested in and motivated by the science courses, the lab courses, which nobody thinks can, can be done at all well remotely. And I'm wondering what, you know, what the district's thought and the high school's thoughts are on the lab courses, the kind of hands-on stuff, and whether you could talk about that with regard to what you're able to offer at the secondary level?
Yeah, Pat, you're, you're right. It's extremely challenging. And we have excellent science teachers and they want to make sure that kids actually get their hands on materials and grapple with scientific concepts and explore them and uncover them as, as opposed to just witnessing them, right, on a screen. So I, I, Dr. Brown and I were approached by one of our excellent educators, science educators, who did some work along with folks in the task force from the summer, the educator task force. And they actually did a deeper dive in terms of what it would take, thinking about not just science, but actually technology and the arts, so other subjects that also need more materials and they need kids to, to physically handle things in order to learn and really understand the concepts. So they came up with some great guidelines and Yvette DeBoer gave Dr. Brown and I a list, frankly, of some materials that would be really helpful. So, so we're in the midst right now of working through those and working through materials distribution, et cetera. I had a tech teacher email me the other day and asked if he could send saws home. So we're looking, that's not a yes or a no yet, but, you know, trying to figure out how to do woodworking in a distance learning environment is, requires as much creative thinking as, as we can. So we're working on getting the materials, getting them to kids in order to, to make that experience better than just on a screen witnessing it.
I have a question that is related to staffing. What are the plans either for substitutes, either for in-person- What are the plans either for substitutes, either for in-person or for distance learning?
Yeah, I've been saying to folks, we need to start recruiting. Every day a parent or a community member asks, how can they support and how can they help? And I respond with recruit a substitute teacher or a bus driver. This will, this will be a challenge for us, not just here, but everywhere. There's always been a shortage of substitutes and it will be, it will be, it will be highlighted now in the midst of this hybrid approach or the pandemic response. So Lily, you want to add anything there? I've been just telling folks to recruit. This is going to be an area of need for us.
I can certainly agree. Folks that we have, you know, we've been collaborating with Mike and Jane. I think they're on this call as well. Thank you, Mike and Jane. Your partnership has been wonderful and, I'm sorry, Mike and Jane. And we've, you know, we've looked at this, this idea of building-based substitutes, right? So you're not traveling to many places. Supports the substitute teacher themselves and also the community there, right? In terms of mitigating the potential spread of COVID-19. So that's, that's an in-person solution. And then in terms of the distance learning setup, so we're, we're inviting all of our substitute teachers to participate in the professional development this week and from the summer as well. So we have asynchronous offerings as well that we were able to put together. It's almost like a self-directed learning experience that folks can go through. And, and you know, we're, we're going to invite, continue to invite substitutes to the, and ask them to be a part of the professional learning that's going to continue throughout the year.
Lily, are we going to do another parent survey to see, given the numbers going up, people might have changed their minds?
Karen, it's a good question. Because the models right now are the, the same, right? We don't think there's, it's necessary at the moment to do that. It may, that may change, right? Families are letting principals and main offices know if they're making shifts, if they're interested in making a shift. So, so families are, are reaching out frankly.
Other questions, comments?
I'll just say that my, my comment is that I support option one as strongly as I possibly can at this point. And I think that's what our families want and need. And, and I think it can be done with PPE. And I understand concerns of, of teachers and staff and families, but I don't think we can be doing virtual instruction for two or three years.
Appreciate that, Pat. I would certainly agree. We have an obligation and a responsibility to meet the needs of every kid, every kid, every child, every student in this community. And, and certainly a big part of that is in-person instruction. And so we've been working toward this. We, we've known that we need to reopen and there's, and we will continue to move forward. And we do need to have staffing in place and systems in place to do what we do, which is educate the children in this community. And so we will just keep up, and option one, yes, that is, that is where we need to be. And anything less than that is going to be a, a failure on our part to meet the needs of the kids in this community. And so Dr. Brown, right, we don't, we don't plan for failure. We don't work for failure. We, we ensure that we meet the needs of kids. And that's, that's our mission. That's what we are supposed to do. Other, other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just want to add, yes, I very much want to have, I've said this repeatedly, the people, the caregivers, parents, kids who want to be in person to have them back in-person learning. But we know that we're going to still have significant numbers who are doing distance learning for a variety of reasons. And so we also need at the same time to be focusing on making that as good as it can be. That, and, and it's a huge challenge to try to do both, to try to figure out, you know, how, how do we, in this pandemic, make things work in person? And at the same time, be able to serve the, the needs of the children who are not going to be in our buildings.
Thank you for sharing that, Moira. And I think it's really important for folks to have patience with educators right now as they're trying to sort this out, particularly at the secondary level, to do an in-person experience, particularly with a complex high school like the one we have, with the kind of offerings we pride ourselves on. To do that for in-person and at the same time for the young people who are choosing to be virtual, it's, it's, it's a daunting challenge. And we, and the more we study this issue and the more barriers that reveal themselves to us. So we're working through it and we're committed to it. But again, perfection can be the enemy of good in this situation. We won't be perfect whenever we roll out. We will roll out something, but people are going to need to be patient with us because it's going to be so, so hard to do. And it will look completely different, not completely, it'll be very different from anything we've done in the past.
And I certainly agree with Moira. We need to do both well for as long as it takes, frankly. And eventually there will be a coming together of those, of that experience. But Dr. Brown, you said it, there's, the, this pandemic has accelerated change in many aspects of society. And, and Dr. Brown, I think you, you've said it several times, there, there may always be a, that distance learning piece for some of our students. And it's not going to go away. And it's a question of how, how well can we do that incorporating the high school, well, high school, middle school experience. Elementary school, I think, is really tough to do totally distance learning. But, but eventually, you know, having, you know, that, that best solution for each shot, right? So, but eventually it will be majority in, in, in the classroom, but there may always be that, that population that is best served in another way.
Rob, the only thing I would add to the conversation is, and Dr. Brown, thank you for encouraging folks to have patience. While we're board members, while we're superintendents and principals and teachers and bus drivers, we're all also experiencing the same public health crisis. And what that has taught me, as we try to think about classrooms, think about opening buildings, think about opening up college campuses, is that the truth is in the details. And so we have a lot of really great ideas and we have to spend a great deal of time of how to actualize those. And so for the folks who want to send emails, please do. And I'm hoping that those emails also include invitations to help us work through these, these details. What we need right now is much more collaboration than ever before if we're going to try to do the things that our team is doing. So keep the communication open and keep a mindset that we have to do this collectively together, collaboratively, if we're going to do it for our young folks. So appreciate you all.
Well said, Sean. Any, any other comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, I just want to say an appreciation for the work you're putting into trying to forge these solutions because they really aren't easy. And I, I think that issue of detail, like you, you come up with an idea and then you start to sort out, well, how are you actually going to do that? And it's such an important process. I really appreciate all the many ways you're trying to solve these, these problems that really aren't easy ones to solve. But I'm, I'm, I'm excited that we're, we're trying to figure it out.
Dr. Brown, do you have more PowerPoints or anything else you want to share? We don't do a lot of PowerPoints, Dr. Brown. So Lily, anything from the team tonight? We meet frequently and obviously at, well, at and on demand whenever, whenever we need to as we're working through all the, all the work that you all are doing on an everyday basis. So any, any other discussion items if we are done with reopening? Not hearing anything. For many, it's the first day back to work after the long Labor Day weekend. For some of us, it might have been a little longer weekend, but I hope everybody enjoyed and took some time to recharge a little bit. There's a lot of work to do, that's for sure.
Rob, did, did we move and pass the consent agenda or did we skip over that?
Was done.
No, Pat, we, we very much, we actually voted on it and everything, like, like we're supposed to.
Sorry.
It was, no, it was the first thing we did before we went to the policies.
Thinking about other things.
And the record may show, Pat, that you voted on it, but that's, we're, we have, there's a lot of meetings, Pat, that's all good. Anything else? All right. If we're, if we're all set, then we can let everybody who is listening and everybody who is on the screen take off, go home, or just have dinner and exec team, go home. Everybody have a, have a good evening and we will be connecting soon and shortly. Thanks to everybody.